This place is full of, you can tell the people that like to be with old people because they really take care of you good and are very kind.
Twice a day, every day, activities, people have an organized activity that's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo. We play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here. It's a good place to be.
And I will just official budget hearing to order and give the floor to Kathy.
Okay, Quinn?
Thank you. We're gonna put a PowerPoint up. This is for the public hearing. Right down there, yep. There we go. Okay, next slide.
Oh wait, I gotta show them the screen.
Yeah, you do. Yep. Whoops, just escaped right now and then do that again. Which just keeps going. So, present, uh, share. I'll just go back up the slideshow. Very cool. Can everybody see it? That's on camera? Yes, okay. Um, okay, next page. Okay, so first of all, we'll talk about patient revenue and expense in fiscal year 2026. Our revenue budget was created by using the prior year's revenue without an increase in charges. So we haven't got any kind of 3% or 5% increase. Fiscal year 2026 budget was made by comparing actual numbers from fiscal year 2025. This was on some recommendations that we had for that in previous. Our numbers came from Epic, our medical and billing record system. So that's where those numbers come from, not from our accounting system. Department managers then estimated their expenses for us for the budget. And we talked about the CEO and the CFO encouraged them to make compromise reductions to expenses and define methods for saving and increased revenue. So expenses were reduced from fiscal year 2025 to by $4.4 million of spending for this budget. Okay, so the fiscal year 2026 budget is based on the when I say that already, 2024 budget and fiscal year 25 actuals. Overall, the goals are to sustain our 50-plus residents for the manor, increase the food and bed volume by 2%, and increase radiology revenue by 0.5% or a half percent with additional modalities that we've acquired. And other departments' revenue is based on fiscal year's 2025 utilization. So really, we are very conservative on our increases on that. Hospital rates were not increased, as I think I might have mentioned that before. Volume was moderately increased, that 2% and that half percent that we showed you. Manor revenue was also increased to sustain a volume of 50 residents. And our other patient revenue was budgeted based on the actuals. Volume trends were also considered in budgeting the revenue. So that's how we got that. For adjustments to the revenue, we had the total contractual adjustments in bad debt were calculated at 29.5% of the gross patient revenue. And I just wanted to note that reserves were not made in 2025 and so therefore we use this calculation of 29.5% based on what we've seen to be able to actually account for that based on general accounting practices that like we're supposed to be able to do. Salaries and wages were increased to cover hiring of a clinic director that we've talked about for some time. They've never had one and we need that in order to improve our clinic's presence in the community and get better service there. And then we have an HR director that was previously an HRO, so that job is in there as well. There are 11 CNAs to replace staff and for increased census. So those 11 CNAs are because of the census in the manor. No raise will be provided until and unless we see performance aligned with budgeted expectations. So we're not budgeting it in here right now. And our CNAs were adjusted in accordance with salary surveys, and we talked about that a couple of months ago, to and local competition. So those increases are in that budget for $18 an hour. Okay, then this is just a little bit of a look at the operating budget. It's total gross patient revenue is 30.9 basically in revenue. Gross revenue deductions from revenue is 9,702,000. Our net patient revenue is 21.2 million and our net operating revenue is 6.6 million with a total revenue of 27.9 million. And our expenses are right at the same amount, it's 27.9. There's a little bit of difference. So our operating income is 4,366. I've looked back on some other years, that's pretty in line. We either had losses in the previous year when I was looking at 2023's that we had or a little bit above. Then if you look at our total non-operating revenue, it's 1.0864 total non-operating revenue, and that has to do with our intergovernmental transfers and our meal levy. Once we get those taken care of, the total net income is at a positive 1,9291. So, let's see. I think the only other thing I wanted to mention was our capital budget. And what we've done is we've talked to individual managers and the CEO, CFO, and nursing home administrator. I've talked to them. At this time, we really look at the need at the time of the acquisition and the availability of funds are the final determinants for capital items required. So basically, we don't get them unless we feel like we can afford to be getting capital items. We've gotten some this year. We've been lucky enough. And it's only if we get into something breaks down or something like that that we will need to worry about. Currently, we do not have plans for capital purchases until we determine performance metrics are met. So that's my presentation for the public hearing. And then we can open it up for questions?
Too many questions?
No. Okay. Any questions from anybody in the on? Okay. That was fast.
Any further?
I know, I know. So if we don't have any questions from the public.
We'll have to wait till 5:30 to start.
Well, yeah, we'll wait to have the meeting at 5:30, but we can end the public hearing, correct? Or should we wait a little while?
Maybe just, I mean.
Yeah, cuz I don't like to do
Open in case somebody joins or questions.
What we always did was call for public comment at least three times.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know, we've got counsel there that could tell us whether we were doing it right or wrong, I guess.
Oh, that sounds good to me.
Do we have any public comment? Do we have any more public comment? Okay, well, we think we've got our three times covered.
And board meeting will start at 5:30. Put ourselves on
The hearing.
Yeah.
Do you have hope? Do you have faith for Weston County and for education in Weston County? Do you feel good about the future here?
Yes, generally. I think we have some major challenges. And some of those we have not we as such in Weston County, but some of us, the people in the state of Wyoming have brought on ourselves a little bit. We, the big majority of us, think it's important not to overspend. But we've salted away an awful lot of money in the state of Wyoming. And at a time when perhaps we needed to do some work on swimming pools and on schools and on city streets and city stores and city dumps.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you messed up.
Maybe start again. Have these been flipped, six and five? Now that I look at that, it doesn't really matter, I guess.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. I will try calling this thing to order again at 5:31. Mary, do we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum.
Okay. Ted, do you wanna lead the pledge and I will pray?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, I thank you for this day and I thank you for the opportunity to to be a part of the hospital and part of this community. Just pray and ask you for help in making good decisions and wise ones. Thank you for that. It's in your name we pray.
Okay, so are you gonna take care of the budget? I didn't notice that my name was on that, or do I just?
I think we just asked, we missed asking. Yeah, and visitors' comments.
Oh, yes. Do we have any visitor comments? Okay, no visitor comments, so let's pass these around.
Yes. I just brought them back so that you guys could have them again.
You want?
Is that the same one?
I I was going to very
If you've already got it.
I've got, I've got mine from the other night.
Yeah, and I've got my notes.
Okay, if you've got those, that's fine. I just wanted to
Yeah, no, that's fine.
If I hadn't have made them, you guys wouldn't have them.
Yes, I agree. I agree. Thank you for that.
Do, and are the assumptions the same too?
Yeah, they're the same. Yeah, the assumptions are the same.
Okay. So how do we want to do it? Do you guys, do we need any more discussion? Do you just want to? Do you want to just call, do you want to just call for the vote? Or how, how would you guys like to handle?
Do you want to do the discussion after you?
The discussion is supposed to be between the motion and the
That's what I thought, okay.
That's how it's supposed to be. We don't often manage it.
Okay.
Hello, Madam Chair, may I make a motion that we approve the 2025-2026 budget as presented?
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded, the 2025-2026 budget. Do we have any discussion?
Ben, it's got, I think.
No, no discussion. I'll just turn my mic off to be ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
What are you having?
Oh, that was just the who knows what it was. It might have been my prime date when you gave me that.
I think it was my phone. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
Okay, so any, any, any discussion? If there's no discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the 2025-2026 budget that's presented to us, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay.
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 Okay, the budget is passed, three to two.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootleggers liquor. The deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Okay. There we go. Got it. Okay. Um B, enter. Okay, so now I hope I've got this. Do I, should I read these resignation letters? Okay, so the first one is from Nathan. He said, "I would like to thank Kathy and my fellow board members for allowing me to be part of this great effort to rebuild Weston County Health Services following great past adversity. Much has been accomplished and I truly believe that Weston County Health Services is now on a path towards success. After careful reflection, I now believe my resignation is what is best for the hospital's continued growth. Effective immediately, I tender my resignation from the Board of Weston County Health Services. Think we can all be proud of what we have achieved together. I wish you well on your continuing endeavors toward the hospital's success. Kind regards, Nathan Ballard." And then there's, we also have a letter from Corinne. "Kathy and board members, this letter is to inform you of my resignation from Weston County Health Services Board of Trustees effective immediately. All Weston County Health Services property has been returned to Weston County Health Services with this letter. Regards, Corinne."
They both have returned their stuff.
Um, so I, I personally like, I I, I am sorry and I I think it's that's a hard situation and I wish it was different. So, but we need to probably vote to accept their resignations.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the resignations.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Um, all those in favor of accepting their resignation, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. So we have accepted their resignations. So now, now we need to consider how we want to go about, how we want to go about appointing to the members.
Madam Chair, I think of course we need to advertise and start that process quickly as we can. And maybe post it at the courthouse, I don't know. A board up there, there used to be a board to post things on.
See things posted on the door.
Okay, and
Put it on Facebook too.
The more word we can get out in their area, including Upton. If we can get it out in Upton also Weston County, I guess. However, Osage, I don't know whether the post office will allow us to put something in Osage. Post office.
I don't know, but I think if we put it in the Gazette, that would help too.
Yes, I
Yeah, bullet papers.
And there is a board at the post office outside
Okay.
that I can put up a notice.
Okay. Um, for two weeks. Do you wanna run it?
That's what, that's what we did when Nick resigned, was we had two weeks. We ran it for two weeks.
So it'd be the week of the 17th and the week of the
So that would be the week of the 17th and the 24th. But it definitely doesn't hurt if the board wants to run it longer. Depends on when you wanna hear the, or when you wanna do interviews.
I think that, I think that we should do interviews before our August meeting. Not the same day, but on a different day before our August meeting. Does anybody have, what, are you? Did you, did you raise your hand there, Ben?
No, I did not. Nope.
Okay.
So if you ran it for those two weeks, then the following week after that would be the week of the 31st. And then we have the week of the 7th and the week of the 14th before the 21st. So we have three weeks in between there.
So any opinions on what days?
I'm here every day, so, pretty much.
I would like to, well, that depends on, I guess how quickly, of course, word's gonna get out. Somebody that wants to be on the hospital board.
Right.
I would say two weeks is probably time enough to go ahead and get their name in the hat. So speaking, we would also have time to go three weeks if we needed to, three times.
I would say we advertise it for two weeks, but maybe May, wait, I mean, do a full three, three weeks before we
Usually when I advertise, I say that the position will be open and end date of
Right, yeah. So that's why we wanna have it, we wanna decide on an end date, I think.
I would agree to that also. That way someone doesn't walk in the door the night of interviews, they won't.
Yeah, that already happened the last
There hasn't been a day, so you have to have your application in by such and such day and interviews will be such and such.
Yeah, so, so last time, did, we need to put on the advertisement where to pick up? Didn't we have a form?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a form.
Yes, that they have, and that to be notarized, so, yeah. The form has to be notarized or they have to be notarized?
The application does.
Okay.
What is the criteria? Do they have to be a voter and Weston County resident, Weston County?
Should, we should.
So we, somehow or another, we need to
So that's usually why, like, if we're gonna do interviews on Wednesday, we have it due on Monday, so that
We have an opportunity to check the credentials.
Exactly. Make sure they're registered voters.
The paper's coming out.
Thursday.
Thursday.
I was gonna say Wednesday night.
So the 17th, the week of the 17th, it would be in that paper then, okay. The 17th and the 24th. I mean, do you wanna end it, like, another week past that, like, August 1st or something like that?
Or July 31st, that's
Thursday, yeah.
That's Thursday. And then we can
Not have the meeting on Thursday though, so that we don't have to miss another week of farmers' markets.
Yeah, that's fine, because really, that's just the end date. We'd have to get it all pulled together.
Missing out on my year four and I don't
Yeah, all those people who want to buy their wares.
Your, your, your board meeting is the 15th, right? Because of the five-week month.
No, August 21st.
It'd be 24th.
The third week.
Third week.
Oh, what did I say? Something different than that. 15th, sorry. Okay, so
So if you had them do the first, then we could have interviews sometime the week of the 4th. Fourth, fifth, sixth. Whatever, Thursday. Whatever night, not Thursday.
So you're saying that you would want the applications in no later than August 1st? Okay.
Yeah.
The statute contemplates a 30-day period for the appointment.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Allison.
We have done 30 days?
30, so we have to have the appointment done in 30 days?
You don't, then the commissioners could pick it up. So usually there's a little latitude there, but goal should be to get it done in 30 days from today.
So today is
10.
The 10th. So we have to have, we should have it done before August 10th.
Sorry for my voice.
Yeah.
So that's still the same week you were looking at, the week of the 4th?
Oh, why do I have to bring my calendar? Yeah, so It really doesn't matter to me what day, let's, let's, let's decide what day that, that first week of August. Does anybody have any, any day so we can't do it on that, that week?
I, I'm open that whole week.
My in-laws are in town, so I'm, I would like to have a meeting every day.
Okay.
That's terrible.
The, um, the, is that Fair Week?
No, Fair Week before. We, Fair Week would be over.
Okay.
There, it's the week before, so Fair Week would be over.
Well, we sure would want a decision before the 10th.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so I'm open. As far as I know, I am open.
Okay, so, oh, it's Thursday, just an easy pick, cuz that's the day we always meet. So
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday, I have a meeting at 5:00, so what time do you wanna do them?
Okay, so how about Monday, Wednesday?
30 or 6:00, it's fine.
Okay, it's not a long meeting. Okay. So 5:30?
No.
No?
6:00.
6:00, okay.
Sorry, what day, what day are we talking?
6:00 on Tuesday, the 5th.
The 5th.
This is, this is
Tuesday, the 5th.
This is interviews?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just trying to get the farmer's market on Tuesday. I was thinking back to Thursday.
Okay, well, let's do it at 5:00.
Do, that's fine, summertime.
The one question I have is, what if there's a bunch of people that have applied? Are we gonna do them all same night? Okay.
And so let's make it 5:30.
Okay.
In case, I can't imagine there being a bunch, but I can't imagine.
There wasn't quite a few last time.
So if we have quite a bunch, do you want to take the responsibility, maybe giving nip times? So if we're asking questions, we should ask the same question of each candidate.
I think like last time, 15 minutes apiece was about right. I think that's what we gave them, 15 minutes.
Well, we'll see how many people we have.
Sure. I, I just was trying to break it up, so that's yeah, Y candidate wasn't listening to X candidate's answers.
Which we did last time. Yeah, which we did last time.
Yes.
Are we clarifying, are we doing five thirty or six?
Five thirty.
Okay. If that's okay, is five thirty okay with everybody?
Yes.
Guys got people in mind could say apply, apply.
I do.
Good.
Good.
Good. That helps, you know.
Okay, anything, anything, um, anything else we need to figure out about that?
Madam Chair, do you think you have a resolution for the advertising of this?
Do we need a, do we need a motion to advertise? We probably do need a motion to advertise.
Yes.
So.
Probably so, just because it's official stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe we could have a motion to just do that whole thing, right?
Yes, yeah.
That's crazy.
So I make a motion that we advertise for two weeks beginning now and hold interviews with application deadline of eight one and hold interviews on August, Tuesday, August fifth at five thirty.
Starting at five thirty.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
Yes. And give the chairman the latitude to schedule as needed based on the number of applicants.
Very good.
Right, yeah.
And basically to follow the requirement steps as per the special district boards, because we have to do the certain paper and it has to be notarized, so we'll follow all the processes. Okay.
And maybe we can make the applications available at the front desk, so then.
Yeah, we could do that.
We can.
They have to be returned to you, but they need to be available at the front desk in case somebody wants to go have it notarized by somebody else.
But we, I did, on the last time, I had several.
We have three notaries.
They had a hard time. They, they couldn't find the application, like they didn't know where to go to get the application. So let's make sure that's in the advertisement.
And we can put it on the website.
Yes, but I would still put it, I would put it in the paper to go to the front desk at the.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Yep. Okay.
And what are the convenience for you guys to know that if it asks, I notarize, I won't charge for this one?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. I was getting ready to get back to that. Any more discussion?
We are.
Okay. Um, are we, are we ready to vote then? If all those in favor of the motion to advertise as stated by Carrie, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. That, that motion has passed. Is there any other? Any other business that we need to talk about?
This, I want to adjourn. Call for.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same. Oh, it is six fifty-seven and.
Five fifty.
Five fifty-seven.
You're just not used to saying it that early.
And the motion to adjourn has passed, so.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Our keep providing.
What's that?
Try to keep feeling better or get feeling better or.
I'll keep trying.